Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just some comments, anybody wishing to speak, you may do so, you state your name and address and you have five minutes to speak. Thank you.
Ken Mielbauer, I live at 9128 Prairie Village Drive in Pleasant Prairie. There's a couple of issues with the 2015 budget I'm asking all of you to give additional consideration to before tomorrow night. Recently, this board passed a revised debt management policy. On page six of that policy, it states, "The term of any debt obligations issued by the county should not exceed the economic life of the improvements that they finance." It looks to me like there are assets being financed on 10-year bonds in the 2015 budget in violation of this policy. Do you really think computers and software have a 10-year life? What about squad cars, pickup trucks, printers, network switches, Microsoft Office 2013? Are you telling me it's going to be used until Microsoft Office 2023 comes out? I'm not sure about that. Some of the assets that are being replaced still have outstanding debt obligations. So when the new assets, like some computers, get put in service, we're still paying for the old assets. And what about those miscellaneous projects, the ones that are lumped under the $30,000 and under category? They add up to $128,000, that's 6% of the IT capital budget. One might suspect this to be $128,000 of technology stuff that maybe doesn't have a 10-year life. If you approve this 2015 budget, you're effectively preapproving more outlay and more expense in 2016 and beyond. As an example, the expense category of IT data processing costs, it's budgeted for $1,227,000. A $300,000, 32% increase over 2014. This single expense accounts for 1/5 of the 2015 levy increase. Now, it's probably too late to do anything about it. Did you know last year that these data processing costs would increase by 300 this year? The question is, what future expenses are you not aware of today, but you are giving an implied approval to when you approve the 2015 budget? Approving this expenditure, I'm sorry, the ERP system, capital budget of $500,000. But it's only a step towards a project cost forecasted to reach $2 million. And that's just in the capital outlay. Ongoing maintenance and support costs are estimated to be 20% of the purchase price, which could add another $400,000 to the levy. And that's in addition to the associated debt service. Approving this expenditure now puts you on a path of no return. You could be committing not to $500,000, but potentially up to $6 million. I'm sure you want to make a good decision for your constituents, but to do that, you must know the total cost of acquisition, total cost of ownership of the ERP system. And you should know that same information for all the capital assets that might be subject to future recurring costs. So I ask you to make a well-informed decision this year, so you're not surprised next year. And I hope you'll demand adherence to the debt management policy, so that debt obligations issued by the county, in fact, don't exceed the life of the assets. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name is Donna Zarovi, 6207 203rd Avenue, Bristol, Wisconsin. I'm a proud Kenosha County employee and a member of local 990 union. I'd like to tell you all, though, if you pass the provision in the budget, Christmas is canceled. That's the message I'm here on behalf of myself and the employees of Kenosha County to share with you. Most of us budget out six months to a year and figure paying bills based upon that schedule. To change it and only have a three paycheck window, at the most, to adjust our payments will not work. At the end of the year, we have real estate taxes due, high utility bills, and Christmas. Not everyone has a credit card and wants to pay for Christmas on it. We will be paid five days later, the first paycheck in January, the 7th instead of the 2nd. And a whole week later, the next check, the 23rd, instead of the 16th of January. I have five bills due by the 3rd and won't be able to pay them and will incur late charges. Cutting one whole paycheck from my January budget eliminates the money I and other employees plan to use for our holiday activities. There are a lot of Kenosha County employees who earn $12 or less per hour. One of the account clerks supports her family of four on $41,000 a year. The sad thing is, she earns $600 too much for reduced lunch, but she's eligible for WIC, which is at the poverty level. I know they won't have a Christmas. I cannot fathom how this issue has suddenly arisen. Christmas, 4th of July, and Thanksgiving happen every year. Other departments adjust their workload to finish projects by planning ahead. If payroll is truly so suddenly crushed for time to finish payroll on time, why haven't they asked for assistance from other departments with accounting? In 2014, it's absolutely ludicrous to claim the payroll takes more time to complete than it did when we had our paper paychecks, paper time cards. Quite frankly, it seems that the only reason for this needed change is Act 10 and a strong desire to build the county's bond rating off that extra cash. A change of this magnitude, if it is truly needed, requires more notice than what's currently proposed. Also, at the Finance Committee last week, a board member asked, "How much of our paycheck's been affected by Act 10?" Well, let me share the actual changes to my pay. Since Act 10, I have been decreased $310 per pay period, or over $8,000 a year, that's 17%. It's computed by adding my pension, costs of insurance, loss of our Flex account, yada, yada. This means that Kenosha County employees have over $1 million a year less to spend in the community. Also regarding the insurance, I've talked to several people all over the state in the last couple of weeks who pay higher insurance premiums, but they don't have the high copays for office calls and drugs that we do. I pay $612 for my gym membership, so I could get to platinum, a cost which I used to receive a $200 annual reimbursement for. So to say our insurance cost is only 1% is ridiculous when you factor in everything. As you know, healthier employees cost less in insurance. Humana praised our county workers for their participation. They also, this participation in the healthier employees allowed a return of well over $1 million to the general fund because our health costs were down. Also, we've only had a 25 cent an hour raise since 2010, and that was just this July. Even social security recipients have had at least a 1.7% increase in the last few years. I know most of you, if not all of you, are too young to remember the double-digit inflation we had in 1976, when the cost of living raises that we were receiving were over 12%. At that time, the county employees worked with the county board and took a lower cost of living increase and gave up sick leave in exchange for our better insurance. You keep bleeding us, and soon there's going to be nothing left to take. It seems that the Kenosha County Board no longer wants genuine, hard-working county employees. They only want contracted employees who will not be as dedicated and cost as effective as we are. Merry Christmas. Sorry we can't find it in our budgets to send you a card this year, much less have a Christmas of our own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Millian. I am president of Local 1392 at Brookside Care Center. I would like also to talk about the wages and health benefits for Kenosha County employees, particularly Brookside employees. Brookside employees are the lowest paid of the entire county. The average Brookside CNA makes about $25,000 a year, or between $11 and $12 an hour. A large percentage of our employees are single moms or in one-income families. Here's a little history lesson for you. Starting in 2012, we were required to pay a pension contribution of 7%. For those of you who believe the public sector is overpaid or should be in line with the private sector, we can never be the private sector. Kenosha County employees are mandated by law to have and pay for our pension. Private sector is not. In 2012, we also lost our Flex reimbursement plan benefit of $400 for singles and $800 for families. Starting in 2013, we lost our dental benefit unless we paid for it. Also since 2013, we are required to pay 5% of our health insurance cost. Non-reps or management lost theirs in 2012. Overall, when you add this up, it hits Brookside employees the hardest. That $11 or $12 an hour employee took cuts of over 30% right off their paycheck, which is equal to over $4 an hour in take-home pay. I'd also like to say, we have not had a raise since 2010, except for 25 cents this year. We have had enough taken from us. We can't take any more hits. Your constituents, of whom I am one, clearly don't want tax increase, but they never intended for you to heap it all on the backs of our employees. Please consider this, when you talk and vote about wages and benefits for those who work so hard for Kenosha County and deserve the best you can do, we give our best for you every day we work and expect the same from you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one more thing to bring up.
Oh, I thought you were completely sorry about that.
Okay. Well, you already know I'm president of Local 1392 and an employee of Brookside Care Center. I have worked for Kenosha County for 36 years and lived in Kenosha County for 53-plus years. I would like to address the Brookside building and renovation project that is to be voted on tomorrow night. Brookside already provides the highest standard of excellence in personal care and rehabilitation in this region. We are considered the place to come for short-term rehab or long-term care because of our employees' longstanding commitment to maintain that level of care. Let me tell you, a skilled carpenter cannot build the perfect house without the proper tools. An artist cannot create a masterpiece without having the paints and the brushes he needs. It is the same with the care and the reputation of Brookside. We must grow. We need to expand. Our already excellent care and service must be supported and given the ability to keep up and thrive in our ever-changing industry and culture. We are the apple of Kenosha County's eye, indeed, a jewel known far and wide. And I'd like to tell you a little personal story. This year, my mom was up in the hospital in Wausau, and the case manager said that she needed to go for rehab. So I was sitting there, and she didn't know that I worked at Brookside. I told her that I would be bringing her to Kenosha. And so the case manager looked and went on the computer, and the first name she came out with was Brookside Care Center. So it's very well-known throughout the state. So with, I'm trying to end this, I know my time is up. Please vote yes tomorrow night to fund the building and renovation project of Brookside Care Center. Your yes vote promises to continue the legacy of compassion and commitment for all Kenosha County residents, a promise that Brookside will be here when they need us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I know I went over. I have signatures from my coworkers at work that are supporting this renovation project. Would you like to have them, or should I give them to Fran Petrie?
You can just hand them to Supervisor Ron Johnson, and he'll give them to me. That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
My name is Diana Christopherson. I live at 5121 294th Avenue in Salem, Wisconsin. And I thank you for the opportunity to address the supervisors tonight and the county board in support of Brookside Care Center. I'm the admissions and marketing coordinator at Brookside Care Center. I've been there for three years, well, well over three years. I've worked for Kenosha County for over 11 and a half years. It's also important to emphasize that I've been in healthcare and the industry itself for almost 40 years. So I have a bit of experience. Most often, my experience lies in physician's office and hospital management, in addition to public health. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration. However, tonight, I'm not speaking to you as the admissions coordinator at Brookside Care Center. I'm speaking to you as a family member. I'm speaking to you as the daughter of a short-term rehab resident and the daughter-in-law of a long-term care resident at Brookside. I have firsthand experience of the phenomenal staff we have at Brookside. The caring nurses, nurses aides, the rehab staff that's second to none. Last year, my dad had some extensive surgery up at Freiter, and on New Year's Eve, he was admitted to Brookside Care Center via an ambulance. Three weeks later, he walked out with a cane. About a year and a half ago, my mother-in-law was no longer able to maintain her independence at home. And when the discussion came up about a skilled nursing facility, she told us that she wouldn't go anywhere but Brookside. And believe me, that's not just because I work there, it's because of family history at Brookside Care Center. Many of our Kenosha County residents share that sentiment. And you've got to sit in my job for just a couple days during the week to see and hear the stories that I get from residents and begging to make sure that they have a bed available to them when they do need our services. In fact, I brought a couple different resident satisfaction surveys with me tonight. And this is probably one of my favorites that comes from one of our elderly residents who left us a while ago. She states in this general satisfaction, "All of my life, I wanted to go to Brookside. Everything and everyone was wonderful. Please open the door when I call on you again." She was at Brookside for short-term rehabilitation. Our short-term rehabilitation staff is overwhelmed right now. Today, we counted 75 Medicare Part A and Medicare Part B rehabilitation residents. The halls are crowded. We can't expand our services until we expand our space. And I would hate to close that door to this lady when she calls me again. Healthcare is consumer-driven, just like any other industry. And under the fine leadership, the insightful, foresightful leadership of Fran Petrie, we've been able to meet and exceed the demands of our consumers. Our consumer base is changing, and our service requirements are changing. We're becoming step-down units for the hospital. We have to provide higher-level services than we've ever provided, and the insurance companies are expecting that of us. So we need to grow and change with the industry. Not allowing us to expand Brookside and change with the industry would lead to our demise. But I do understand that there are, you know, some supervisors who would like to privatize Brookside. Privatization of Brookside would be just like locking the doors on us and just like leading us for, you know, setting us up for failure. Last year, we gave approximately $500,000 back to the community. This year, are back to the general fund. This year, we're on target to reach approximately $1 million in revenues back to the general fund. Is that fiscal responsibility to, you know, close our doors or sell to a private company, I mean, to sell to a private company? I don't think so. I urge you all to look at Brookside Care Center and the expansion and renovation project and approval of the bonding. I render my vote in approval of that, and look to you all to also vote in favor of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dana Ozenge. I live at 6734 27th Avenue here in Kenosha. I'm a Brookside Care Center employee and a Kenosha County taxpayer. I've been trying for a while now to put a finger on why Brookside is so special. You know, it's easy to say it's the care, but it's more than that. Why are we the best of Kenosha County three years running? Why does U.S. News and World Report list us as one of the best in the nation? Why are we known for our care, for our healing and speedy recoveries? Why do so many come for rehab and want to stay, or discharge and come back to visit and volunteer? There is no hard factual explanation or definable reason. But when I look around and I see employees here, and I look around Brookside and I see my coworkers every single day, three words come to me: commitment, investment, and passion. Please don't tell my boss I'm not really into the numbers game. I'm more about heart matters. I think she knows that by now. But I want to tell you some things that happen at Brookside on a regular basis. I grew up around the Milwaukee area. Kenosha was a name on the highway sign on my way to Chicago, all of my life. In 1988, I happened upon an obscure classified job ad in the Milwaukee Journal while I was visiting Milwaukee, my family, when I lived in California. I was a single mom. I'd just gotten out of the military, and I wanted to come back home to Wisconsin. As I was here, I was really discouraged. I couldn't find a job. But two days before I flew out, here was this little ad in some weird column in the Milwaukee Journal. Came down to Brookside Care Center, interviewed, got hired on the spot, flew back, gave two weeks' notice, flew back with my child, couldn't bring my belongings, lived in an apartment with basically cardboard boxes for the first couple months of employment. I say that to say that instantly, Brookside became my family. Over the years, I've seen this Brookside family in action, caring for hundreds of residents through sickness and dementia and even death. I've seen life come back into some who came to Brookside as their last stop, life enriched from being truly loved and truly cared for. This Brookside family has also cared for its own. Employees with cancer, employees experiencing the loss of their loved ones, including their children, employees who worked hard on their own time to raise thousands of dollars to purchase the first Brookside bus way back in the 90s for the residents. From bake sales to Relay for Life teams, to employee wedding parties walking through the building on their wedding day so that the residents could be part of their ceremony. That's what Brookside is all about. It's a deep part. It's family. Lastly, even in death, honoring our beloved residents and their families with funeral services in our own multipurpose room. I have an investment in Brookside Care Center, as do all of my coworkers. Not an investment measured in dollars and cents, but investment of the heart. Over and over again, I see the commitment of every staff member, giving more of themselves and providing the greatest care possible every single day they walk in those doors. I know the passion, and I've seen the passion they have when they experience pain and death and love and life every single day. If Brookside were just a building or just a nursing home, half of us wouldn't have stayed there. Kenosha really doesn't need another privately-owned nursing home or rehab center. Kenosha needs Brookside. We are committed, we are invested, we are passionate and purposed about what we do. We are asking you, every single one of you, to stand by us in that commitment and purpose and vote yes to fund our needed building and expansion and renovation project. Vote yes to help us continue our mission to the citizens of Kenosha County in a building that comes alongside the excellence of care we already provide. We are more than ready and more than willing, and I ask you, are you? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nanette Shumway. I live at 5901 First Place in Summers. I'm here on behalf of myself and my fellow county employees. I have been with the county just over six months, and I believe there are some misconceptions on what the county employees are compensated in relation to those in the private sector. I must admit that until I started working for the county, I also had the same misconceptions. But I can honestly say that this is not so. Currently, I am making just over $40,000 per year. That is about 27% less than I was making in the private sector. The position I hold here at the county has greater responsibility and challenges than what I had in the private sector. The premium I paid for health, dental, and vision was $12 less per week than what I pay for these same items in the county. The private sector provided not only health insurance, but they also paid a portion of the premium of the dental and vision insurance. The county does not pay anything toward the premium of dental or vision. In fact, if I didn't have children, I probably wouldn't be able to carry the dental because it would be more expensive to pay for the premium than it would be to just get the services that are provided. If the county would like to attract good employees and retain them, they will need to become more competitive with the private sector. Otherwise, the good employees will get the experience they need and move on. This will cost the county many more dollars in training new individuals, as well as lose quality of work and institutional memory. Thank you for your time, and please consider how the choices you make now will affect the county in the long run.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pamela Maloney. I live at 3104 14th Lane, Unit 4E. I am a taxpayer and have been a county employee for the past 16 and a half years. I came tonight to address issues of benefits. I would respectfully ask on behalf of all hourly employees that you postpone extending the time between pay periods to a future month. If the adjustment is done as stated, our last pay period is December 19th, which is before Christmas and New Year. We all know how stressful that holiday season is without worry about whether or not the first-of-the-month-year mortgage payment, tax escrow payment, car payment, rent, loan, et cetera, that will have to be paid with late charges because of that change in pay date. Also, according to the American Institute of Economic Research, the cost of living during the past 10 years, 2004 through September of 2014, has increased, depending on where you look, between 23 and 26%. you look, between 23% and 26%. The cost of staple supplies such as groceries and gasoline have, in some cases, had a higher inflation rate. A gallon of gas in 2005 averaged $1.78 a gallon. This year, I'm thrilled that the cost of gas has dropped to almost $3 per gallon. Even at this price, it is a 59% increase over 2005. While the 25-cent wage increase was appreciated by all, that increase has resulted in less than $300 gross wages per year using my wage. As a former member of local 990C, in the past 10 years, my hourly wage has increased by 13.8%. With the additional deductions for health, dental, vision, Wisconsin retirement, and flex money, we have lost 9% in benefits, leaving a net increase in my own hourly wage over the past decade of 4.8%. Honestly, I can't afford any more loss to benefits. I have cut out my cable TV. I haven't yet turned on my heat as the temperature inside my apartment is 65 degrees. I'm waiting for 60. I had a 15-year-old car that I finally sold last year and bought a new used car. I can't cut anything else from my payments. A night out for me is eating at McDonald's. I'm allowed to do that four times a month. I have put $20 of gas in my car on October 15th. That gave me a half a tank. Because I haven't gone anywhere except to work in the grocery store, I still have a quarter tank left. Doesn't leave much for anything besides working and getting groceries. I respectfully ask that you take this into consideration when, when considering the 2015 budget. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody else? Anyone else? Okay. Vice Chair Bruny would like to address one issue this evening. I'll give her the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank all the employees that contacted me this past week regarding the pay dates of the new payroll system. I did speak with Mr. Riedel, and we have come to a consensus on this. We are going to push this back. If this is approved tomorrow night, the new pay dates will start in April. They will be April 10th, April 28th, May 15th, and May 29th. That will give you some time after the holidays to readjust everything and to still have a Christmas. I hope that this helps you. Again, if this passes tomorrow night, those will be the dates written into the policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We'll move on to the presentation of the 2015 budget by Supervisor Rose. Supervisor Rose, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the County Board, and members of the general public. I will try to cover some of the high points this evening in our discussion and some of the specifics in addition tomorrow evening during our debate. The general purpose levy for the 2015 budget is $60,573,416, or a 2.4% increase over the prior year. This will mean in dollars and cents for, let's say, a home of $100,000, a $3.90 increase. Adopting a levy of 2.4% over last year results in an inflation-adjusted decrease for the average homeowner of slightly under 1%. In terms of expenditures, both our operating and debt service expenditures increased by $7.2 million. The largest department in terms of operating expenditures is the Human Services Department, which expends $79.3 million, or 42% of the total county operating and debt service budget. Now, what are some of the major levy impacts? Before I recite those, I just want to emphasize that everything that we have passed and at the Finance Committee does meet the state levy limit requirements passed by the legislature, adopted by the governor, and passed into law. Those major elements for 2015 are as follows. Overall county personnel costs increased by $1.9 million. There is $500,000 set aside for a 1 and 1/2% general increase, plus implementation of a new classification and compensation program to be adopted at mid-year. $700,000 for new positions in human services are funded with revenue. Health insurance decreased over $316,000, and there's a vacancy adjustment reduction by $200,000. The Sheriff's Department defunded 10 correction positions at a savings of $528,000. The federal inmates that the sheriff holds annually under this budget are going to be 200 people per day. This increases revenue by some $141,952. The inmate medical expense has been increased by $223,276 at the sheriff's recommendation due to an increase in mental health services. As pointed out by the sheriff, many inmates come with mental illnesses which are untreated. We're not suggesting that $223,276 meets those needs, but it's an attempt to meet those needs. Law enforcement consumes the largest portion of the county levy, some $34.3 million, or 57%. Of this amount, the sheriff uses over 25, almost $26 million, or 43% of our total levy. Debt services will increase by some $661,224. Local, on the highway side, local transportation aids and revenue for state maintenance increased by some $232,850. Sales tax revenue increases by $800,000. The Brookside, as was mentioned by some of the speakers, has a projected budget surplus of $641,339. This is a, this is a decrease of $144,624 estimate from 2014. Joint services increases $101,272 for the county. And indirect cost revenue has decreased $159,359. In information technology, there is an increased data processing cost of slightly over $300,000 due to a rise of costs in software service contracts. This budget, as I said before, meets the state levy limit requirements. The Finance Committee recommends the budget to you this evening. We will debate it tomorrow night, and there will be other things that I'll want to touch on tomorrow evening. We think it is a conservative attempt to meet the needs of Kenosha County and urge your recommendation at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Rose. I'll look for a motion to adjourn this public hearing. It's been moved by Supervisor Rose, seconded by Supervisor Arrington. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Now, we'll move on to the organization.
Wait a second till she steps up.
Okay, no problem. We'll call the organizational meeting in order. Could I get another recall or roll call, please? Citizen comments. Citizen comments is closed. As far as announcements from the chairman, I'd like to welcome our two youth and governors that are to my left, Brianna Ayers from Human Services and Daniel Curvella from Finance. Welcome this evening. That's all I have. We'll move on to Supervisor Reports. Supervisor Reports. Do you have a report? Supervisor Poole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's ironic that the election was held yesterday and we now consider our budget because the election was about the people of this country screaming, "Stop! Stop the spending! Stop the bonding! Stop spending money we don't have! It's time to give taxpayers a break." After all the committee hearings and votes, we have not changed the budget by even a dollar. Numerous changes have been suggested, but none have been approved. And I urge the full board to review the changes that will be proposed tomorrow and carefully consider changes that will keep the levy increase close to 0%. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Poole. Seeing no other, oh, we have one light. Supervisor Hallman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two notes for this body. One, I want to call attention to members at the next Human Services Committee meeting. Manager for our Job Center, Mr. Doug Bartz, will be visiting us. He has some really, really interesting and detailed information around economic development and job growth in our community. I would highly encourage all of you to attend. For those of you who aren't able to make it, we can certainly make sure that the materials that he provides to us are delivered to electronically. In addition, I will also remind members that the audio from that committee will be available on the website shortly thereafter the meeting, probably, I think, usually within the next day or two afterwards. Additionally, and I don't know if I've mentioned this before, I received two letters in the last month or so, both from NACO, the National Association of Counties, just to keep members abreast of what's going on. They came from President Ricky Hokama, who has graciously appointed me to the Arts and Culture Commission for NACO, as well as the Transportation Steering Committee. So, expect some info in, I believe, maybe mid-March after we've met to discuss whatever those items will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Anybody else? Seeing no other lights, we'll move on. County Clerk?
Ordinance 23 from Planning Development Extension Education Committee regarding proposed amendments to the Kenosha County General Zoning and Shoreland Floodplain zoning ordinance in accordance with Section 59.694 of the Wisconsin State Statutes in order to be in compliance with the makeup and terms of the Board of Adjustments. Noble, yes. Decker, yes. Skolitsky, yes. Ratzloff, yes. Gable, yes.
Supervisor Noble?
Move Ordinance Number 23.
Ordinance Number 23 has been moved by Supervisor Noble, seconded by Supervisor Decker. Supervisor Noble.
Ordinance 23, is this on?
That's on.
Ordinance 23 does a couple of things. First of all, it allows, it gets us in compliance with the state law by adding two alternates. And also, right now, our board members serve five-year terms, and state law says they should serve three-year terms, so we're changing the language to that. It also explains what the two alternates would do. One, the first alternate, and the other is a second alternate. The first alternate shall act with full power only when a member of the Board of Adjustments refuses to vote because of a conflict of interest, and the second alternate should act only when the first alternate refuses to vote. So, that explains that. Then, the other change is in Section C, it's not to comply with state law, but it's to comply with what's been our practice, and that is, the wording has always been the chairman of the County Board appoints the member to the Board of Adjustments, but our practice has been the county executive, so we're changing the word, we're changing it to be what our practice has been, which is county executive. So, that's the sum and substance of the changes.
Thank you. Seeing no lights, this is Supervisor Rose.
All right. What is the rationale for the change in term of office from three to five years?
Supervisor Noble?
I'm going to refer to Andy Bueller. He came tonight to, in case there was a question of that nature.
Mr. Bueller, you have the floor.
Good evening. This is Andy Bueller, Director of Planning Operations. Basically, that was a state law change a number of years ago. The Legislature changed the wording in 59.694 from five years to three years. I can't tell exactly why that was, but we're just looking to comply with that.
Can I further question? Is this a requirement or a recommendation?
It's a requirement.
All right. Well...
Does that suffice there, Supervisor Rose?
Well, it's, it's the answer. I still don't know what the rationale is. I'm always hesitant to increase term limits here, three to five years. I don't know why, and I...
No, it's decrease from five to three.
Decrease. I'm sorry. I misunderstood what you said. Decrease it.
Okay. Seeing no more lights, simple majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Resolution 62 from Human Service Committee, a resolution to approve the appointment of Ellen Cupford to the Kenosha County Human Service Board. Almond, yes. Gable, yes. Anita Johnson, yes. Decker, yes. Arrington, yes. Blau, yes. Ratzloff, yes.
Supervisor Hallman.
Move the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved by Supervisor Hallman, seconded by Supervisor Gable. Supervisor Hallman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution was approved last night at committee, rather swiftly, might I add. I know we had one member, he didn't object, but he did wish to meet with the nominee. I don't know if that member wants to postpone this or what he wishes to do, if he even chooses to speak on that. But she was approved unanimously by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no lights on this. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Claim Eugene Lamachia injured at Brookside.
Send that to Corporation Council.
Approval of the October 21st, 2014 minutes by Supervisor Blau.
Supervisor Blau?
So moved.
It's been moved by Supervisor Blau. The approval of the minutes is a second. Second. Supervisor Rose, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes? Say aye. All those opposed? I'd like to get a adjournment die for our organizational meeting with someone. Been moved by Supervisor Esposito, adjournment die, seconded by Supervisor John O'Day. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are now adjourned and die. All right. Take a few minutes here, and we'll set up the computer, and we'll move on to the last I'm going to call this meeting to order. Need another roll call, ladies and gentlemen, please? Citizen comments. Citizen comments. Citizen comments is closed. Announcements of the chair, I have none. We'll move on to new business. County Clerk?
Poli, resolution, first reading to required from Finance Administration Committee regarding 2015 Kenosha County budget. Ordinance 25, first reading to required from Finance Administration Committee and ordinance to repeal Section 3.12 of the Municipal Code of Kenosha County entitled County Treasurer. Resolution 1, reading 63, from Public Works Facility Committee regarding repurposed facility building improvement funds for the purpose of purchasing snow removal equipment. Elverman, yes. Grady excused. Frederick, Boyd Frederick, yes. Skolitsky excused. Poole, yes. From Finance Admin, Rose, yes. Ron Frederick, yes. O'Day, yes. Colmeyer, yes. Gens, yes. Gents, yes. Bernig, yes. Dodge, yes.
Supervisor Alverman.
I'd move Resolution 63, Mr. Chairman.
Resolution 63 has been moved by Supervisor Alverman, seconded by Supervisor Rose. Supervisor Alverman.
As we've all noticed, and I've been reporting this administration building and the work on the street here, is just about completed. We will be done with our portion of that by the end of this month, as has been reported, two or three weeks behind schedule, all weather-related. The city is finishing up their sidewalk work, and part of their pattern of sidewalks that they've apparently done downtown, I didn't pay attention, is stamped concrete. And they have installed stamped concrete in front of the courthouse, and are doing stamped concrete in front of this building and alongside of the courthouse. Unfortunately, the equipment that we use to plow here is not friendly to stamped concrete. We have in the past avoided that as a county in projects that we've done. It is on some of the roundabouts as ornamental, but not in an area that we would plow. But what we need to do is buy friendly concrete removal, or snow removal equipment for this stamped concrete out here. We have, from previous projects from this past year, the money in the budget to do it. The resolution states not to exceed $11,000. I've been told they can do it. What we use now is skid loaders, which is a heavy steel plated bucket, and they're going to have to have a poly cushion blade installed on a piece of equipment, and that's where the money... It's going to be probably closer to $10,000, but we are going to have to have that piece of equipment out here, so I would ask for your approval.
Seeing no lights on this...
I didn't want to mention, my agenda is item number... Resolution Number 62. They said 63, is that correct? Should it be 62?
It's 63.
There, Supervisor Dodge, there was an amended agenda, and you... Yours was a hard packet, so yours was sent out before we had the amendments.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other lights on this, this requires two-thirds vote. Roll call has been called. Yes, if you're in favor, no if you're not.
Just a second to set up.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. See you tomorrow evening.